Mr. Phelan, COVID-19 and economic update?
Yes, I'm going to call in Mr. Shiel to come up here. I also wanted to give you a quick update on Altra. I did reach out to Altra Health System. They'll probably be planned to be here two weeks from today at the next city council meeting, but I want to give you update is that they're holding steady, and I think that's a really good sign for our health system. Today, they're at 36 patients, four of which are in critical care, and that's been a pretty steady number over the last week or so, so you should know that. There was also announcement from Governor Burgum that we were going to get 60 Air Force nurses. Altra has received 10 nurses that will start tomorrow, and it sounds like four of the 10 will be critical care nurses. And so I think we should, Council President Sandy, we should be very thankful to our United States Air Force for providing nurses that are coming to our community during the holiday season and giving themselves in the best way of the American spirit. So if you can, you can think of those people and keep them in mind during this holiday season. The hotline and the testing has been steady over the last two weeks, too. So I think that's another positive sign for our critical care, healthcare system that we're holding steady over the last couple of weeks. So with that, I ask Mr. Shiel to come up and give us a briefing.
Thank you. Mr. Shiel, good evening. It's 5:45 and 15 seconds, Mr. Shiel.
Fair enough, Mr. Sandy. Does it run on this PowerPoint? Or I'm sorry, the PDF? All right. Mark Shiel, Praxis Strategy Group, based here in Grand Forks at 33 South Third Street. So first, a little bit of context with the virus, right? So we know that on the left-hand side here, that month of October was pretty poor. Tests were roughly doubled over that time, but cases rose about 500%. Positive test rate was up 200-plus percent. So I heard someone say very publicly Friday even still that the case spread in Grand Forks would do recently to an increase in testing, and I think that those numbers prove that to be false. Over on the right-hand side, since November 8th, things have shifted a bit. Tests are roughly even. Cases are down a little bit, about 30%, positive test rates down 30%. So I think what's really important here is not to look at any one of these numbers in a vacuum by itself, cases, test rate, testing, is to look at them all three in context because they each add context to each other. And again, it's important to point out, I think it's very clear here that the increase in cases wasn't due just to a testing ramp-up. So you can see it here on this chart, right? Over on the right-hand side, things have slowed down a little bit, it looks like. Now, it's far too early to say that this is a trend or things are going down, certainly with Thanksgiving being a very high-risk situation. We may see things shift. And of course, we can't interpret any one day by itself because, you know, the testing varies. We have, one day it's a mass test, one day it's from Altra, one day it may be from long-term care. Same trend here with positive test rate. It's leveled off a little bit, which is positive, at least it's not growing. However, you know, things are still pretty high. If you look at compared to Harvard, what Harvard would call red, and that's the same criteria used in the Health Officers Dashboard, we're six and a half times above that. We're 11 times above the case rate of what the White House would call red. If you add in Polk County, looking at 500-plus metropolitan, metropolitan areas across the country in the last two weeks, Grand Forks is still second in most cases. So I think it's important to say, look, things are leveling, it looks like, maybe there's a hint there of positivity, but yet cases are still pretty high. So it's all college students, right? I mean, that's, that's the issue in Grand Forks. Well, that's not true either. Looked at, broke it down by age, the blue bars here is the population, the orange bars is the last two weeks in cases, and you can see it's pretty even. The age 20 group is a little higher than the population, but not, age 30 to 59 is even more disproportionate. Age 60 is about roughly average, although 70 and 80 is, we have a few more cases than we have share of people there. And so again, here's the same thing, just the trend, and just the point here is each of these are the same age groups. The lines look pretty similar, right? Aside from here, the college students here in August, but very similar pattern across all age groups. So of course, those high cases have led to some health impacts. Here's hospitalizations from the state now. Hospitalization data lags, at least sometimes seven to 10 days. So this downswing may or may not be real, we can't say yet, but the point is that the hospitalizations rose quickly with cases. Same story with the state, right? Rapid increase, which has led to, you know, we've heard a lot about the death rate in North Dakota. The state has indeed led the nation in deaths per week for a while, until recently, South Dakota's ahead of that. However, you know, cumulatively, it's still New Jersey leading the way, right? But North Dakota and South Dakota, you can see here, are climbing the ladder, and North Dakota's, I think, roughly 10th right now in overall deaths from the pandemic. In Grand Forks County, death rates have been a little lower. You can see this orange bar down here compared to some of the other counties across the state, but it is still at a level that the White House would consider a red level of death rate here in the last week. And then just, I think also it's important to point out, this is from the CDC, looking at deaths, excess deaths, right? This is the three years left to right. So you see over the summer, on the right-hand side, North Dakota was doing pretty well. It wasn't seeing many excess deaths until very recently. So we're all starting to see that, the deaths impact, that we're seeing more deaths in the state than what could be, would be expected. And of course, there's some variation by age. Same idea here, broken down by age, and you can see the increases. The gray lines there from each of the last four or five years, the red line is from this year, in this data through early November. So very clearly that there are some pretty clear health impacts. And so we look at, well, how do we predict the future of what might happen in terms of the health impacts? And I think one way to do that is to look at the cases. This is a line chart here of age 60 and above. So we know that there's roughly three weeks between a case diagnosis and death, and we know that death numbers lag a week or two in North Dakota. So I think it's important to just point out that the deaths we're seeing, the increased deaths, are probably due to the cases that are in between those two lines, right? And so it's fairly safe to project some fairly grim days ahead with deaths, because some of those cases have already occurred. Here's the same trend, or the same line, but for 70 and above. And I added that there just to point out that that age group hasn't really slowed down, and we're seeing, the last two days were better, but a little bit of an increase there. So we know that there's higher health risk for ages, and we're not saying anything about personal risk, right? Certainly, there's some risk below age 60 and age 70, but we don't know the exact correlation between hospitalization and death, but I think, you know, there is some correlation. Same trend here for the state, states leading the country, and most of those deaths are coming from between those two lines there. But, you know, there's some positive trends from the community. Here's Google's mobility debt numbers. So this is as of Friday. Top line is people staying home. Bottom line is what they call retail and recreation, which includes restaurants, entertainment, and such. And so here, here's roughly November. Some of this drop here is due to Memorial Day, and there's some data missing there. But you can see that citizens are responding, right? We're about, we're down in traffic roughly half of what it was in April. So this overhear is the April timeline. Here's workplaces, similar, flatter. I think some of the increase here may be due to the schools opening and UND opening. Here's grocery and pharmacy, right? Fairly similar as well. So yes, talk about masks and lockdowns. The term lockdown has become such a cliche with no one ever saying what they actually mean by the word, and it's become meaningless. I included this here because I think it's a really useful way to think about it in terms of a stack of layers of Swiss cheese, all with holes. And so all of these interventions are important, none are perfect, none are useful by themselves because each of them have holes, but together, we know that they're fairly effective, right? And we look at what happened in Arizona here. They closed bars roughly in late June. You can see what followed after that. I use closed bars here just because it was easier to find that date compared to a mass mandate or some of the other things that were done. Similar story in Florida, where they didn't have too many policies, they opened up pretty wide open in the summer, saw an increase in that trajectory following. Similar story in Texas. So I think, you know, back to this chart, there are signs that the community sacrifices that we're making are starting to perhaps reflect in the numbers. Again, we'd rather see it drop, but at least it's not continuing this very rapid growth that we saw in October. So finally, with the economic impacts, of course, we know that they're uneven. Here's job numbers through this October. You see I highlighted leisure and hospitality at the bottom with a 15% decline, but there's positive news here as well. Manufacturing is way up, retail's up, finances up, personal care and other services up. So here, I just compared Grand Forks to 32 other regions around the six surrounding states. With the yellow highlight there is Grand Forks. And so overall, towards the top of that list, the darker bar there is the six-state average. So Grand Forks has lost about 4% statewide or regionally, it's been about 6%, some as much as eight. Duluth is down 8%. If you look at just private sector jobs, Grand Forks is towards the top. So if you unwind that a little bit, it looks like it's state government jobs that dropped a little bit that really pushed Grand Forks down. And so on the private sector side, it looks, you know, very, quite positive, with about a third of the regional rate of job loss over the year. And so here's that state government line. You can see it kind of dropping down, it's bounced back a little bit here, and I'm assuming that's mostly UND. Looking at leisure and hospitality, we saw 15% loss. That's still a little, it's better than the region towards the top of this list. Here's what we saw in hospitality, lost about 2,400 jobs right away and recovered some of those. We're down about 1,800 right now. I'm sorry, 900. Retail is up year over year. I think some of that has to do with the retail trajectory over the last five years or so, and some of the jobs that were lost as compared to other places, but it is up 6% compared to last October. Again, other services looks good. That increase isn't really notable, but it's at least flat. This would be laundromats, repair shops, personal care and such. And the biggest story is manufacturing is way ahead, and I think most of you know that that's probably one of the most important economic trends in this community in the last 10 years. And if, what I found surprising is manufacturing growth rate has actually increased. You can see that the far right there, not only has it been, it continues, it looks like it's up recently. So that's a good thing. So, okay. If those growth is slowing or not out of the woods, it looks like community members are staying home more often in the last two, three weeks, which is great. And so it's early signals that these community sacrifices might be starting to work. Yep, you know, we can still expect to see higher death rates continue for some weeks, two to three weeks at a minimum, and more if we can't, if the numbers don't go down. And we know that these mitigation practices do work, right? And so it's important to keep that up. Hospitality is probably going to continue to feel the pain for a while, and barring some federal assistance, you know, they're bearing the brunt of this. And then Grand Forks overall, though, does look better than the region in terms of jobs impact. And so I think there's reason for optimism in the big picture. Certainly, we've all seen the recent breakthroughs in vaccine technologies, but I would point out that I think one thing that this region has done very well is execute on testing, right? That's a logistical thing, and I think that skill set positions this region to do, do a good job in deploying this vaccine, which could take six to eight months. But I know, you know, Grand Forks Public Health has been working for a long time in that, and the partners are really well-aligned. So I think there's good reason there to look towards the future with a little, a little light of hope. That's all I've got. I would stand for any questions if you, if that's tied or...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shiel. Right on schedule, appreciate that. Any comments or questions from Mr. Shiel related to the data? Anyone on Zoom have questions? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Shiel.
Thank you.
Appreciate your leadership on that. And then, Mr. Doolitz, for the dashboard update, is Mr. Doolitz on Zoom?
Yes, I am. Just one moment.
No problem. Thank you for joining us tonight.
So Council President Sandy and members of the committee, my name is Michael Doolitz. I'm the Opiate Response Project Coordinator in normal times and the COVID-19 data and analytics leader, you know, in a temporary role. I am going to give you a quick update on our dashboard. You'll notice a lot of similarities between what Mark Shiel just provided and what I will discuss. We don't coordinate our, we've coordinated some, but, you know, the conclusions that we come to are largely independent. So he's helped in the past with our city efforts to get a dashboard up on the website and things like that, so we've coordinated on that, but our conclusions were reached independently, just, you know, as an FYI. So looking at our dashboard, we do have some good news looking at the dashboard. We did move down into orange as of today, and we've seen a pretty significant decrease in the number of new cases per 100,000. The big caveat to that is that we did have a couple of really big testing days. You know, when you have 300 tests come in and you don't replace that with another 300 test day, that's going to cause a pretty significant drop in the number of new cases. Overall, I do think and agree with Mark that we are on a downward trend right now that's showing some, you know, positive hope on this. We just want to be careful, you know, to not declare victory too early on this because your, our case numbers are quite high still right now, but it is very reassuring that we're pointing in the right direction at least. Our testing numbers do remain high. Our percent positivity is decreasing. Taking that together, you know, we aren't necessarily having a testing failure. We are seeing subjectively a little bit of increased time between testing and results, but, you know, when I try and go back and look at the data, I'm not seeing anything major in that respect. You know, something, you know, glaring like it's taking a week for test results. Usually, we're seeing results, you know, around the three to four day mark. And we are on the downward trend, unfortunately. That's not necessarily bearing out quite yet in the hospital capacity. They are still constrained, and we are unfortunately seeing some additional, you know, individuals who are getting really sick with COVID as, as well. Comparing our, looking at our age groups, I wanted to focus a little bit on the 60-plus age group. In general, our age groups are all kind of falling at the same pace. The only one that I'm noticing that is not following that same trend is the 80-plus age group. So 60 to 69 is kind of following the same downward trend that you would otherwise see. Same with 70 to 79, but 80, 80-plus is still kind of pointing upward overall, which does provide a little bit of concern that we are seeing still continued spread maybe in long-term care settings or in social groups in the 80-plus age group or individuals providing care, things of that nature. So that is something that, you know, is still of concern to us, something to keep an eye on. Looking at our active case rate, this is a way for us to make a really pretty graph looking at, you know, looking at where we're going with our active cases. So active cases kind of smoothed out over time because as you go through and close out cases in our system, you know, it kind of makes things look really smooth, especially when you're averaging over 14 days. So this 14-day look at active cases is kind of a really good demonstration of how we have kind of bent back in a downward direction, again, giving us some hope. Looking at percent positivity, we are also seeing that go down pretty significantly both when we look at seven and 14-day averages of the percent positivity. So we're getting, you know, our seven days below 10%, which is, you know, very much our goal is to keep it below that 10% point, and our 14-day is pointing in that direction as well. Looking at Grand Forks compared to other communities, it does seem that Grand Forks County and Ward County are kind of following the same trajectory where Burley, Morton, and Bismarck are, you know, kind of together, and they're similar trajectories. So Grand Forks and Burley both kind of rose up quick and are kind of falling quick, whereas Burley, Morton, and Cass have both been very gradual in their case changes over time, and aren't necessarily seeing that decrease, which is also kind of following what the, we're seeing as a whole, as a state. A couple meetings ago, I did, you know, make kind of a bold projection looking at, you know, where we could be going with our case counts in the community by taking a look at our case doubling time. So initially, I discussed our case doubling projection as of 11/1, and that case doubling projection was about 23 days. And then I, at another meeting, I also discussed our case doubling projection as of 10/28, which was about 26 days. And then taking a look at those two projections, as well as another one I pulled from a week before, we are kind of following, are falling below the projected, projection that I had provided. So right now, we should have been doubling as of today, and we'd have to have about, or we're below that, doubling by about 500 cases. So we are running a little bit below what we had projected, and more importantly, when you look at kind of the upswing in that graph that kind of shows the exponential growth, we also are, you know, looking to be, you know, looking to be below that as well. So again, another promising sign that, you know, maybe we are starting to, you know, bend towards a downward, you know, downward trajectory. Our current case doubling time is looking at about 37 days as of today. So as you can see, that number or that line is starting to go up. You know, we want that number to go up. It looks like, you know, before, before classes started at UND and we saw that first kind of limited outbreak in the community, we were at about 75 days for our case doubling time. And that would, you know, if we could get our case doubling time up to that amount, that would, you know, that would demonstrate a pretty, a pretty good spreading out of any additional cases in the community, and would do a lot towards getting us, you know, bridged over into a vaccine. Taking a look at our hospitalizations, you know, I think Mark does a, you know, is pretty right on that, you know, it is, it can be a little bit of a lagging factor, and we also found it to be a little bit of an under-reported factor until we started making it, until we started changing our practices to make sure our hospitalization data was well updated. So right now, we, we're seeing a little bit of a downward trend over the past week. When we looked this morning, we were up a little bit with the number of hospitalizations with approximately, you know, the number I got this morning was 41. There were probably some discharges, hence why Mr. Phelan had discussed 36. So we are still a little bit, a little bit higher than where we had been over the past week. Looking at that on a state and regional level, we are kind of in the middle between Minnesota and South Dakota. Again, both states are having huge impacts with their COVID hospitalizations. Fortunately, we have had some decreases, so we aren't kind of following the same trajectory as South Dakota. Finally, looking at deaths, you know, kind of building off of what Mr. Shiel had said, you know, deaths can be a little bit of a lagging indicator, but I'm going in and adding, you know, adding deaths into our death counts generally, you know, when a death is reported out, it's between about five to 14 days in the past for when, you know, when it gets added on there. So this past week, we did have 10 COVID-related deaths in Grand Forks County, which again is a pretty significant number compared to where we have been, and I would expect to potentially see that go up a little bit over time. When I was updating, you know, my dashboard yesterday, we hadn't had many like, you know, greater than two weeks out or anything like that. So, you know, we are generally seeing them reported within that two-week timeframe. When we look at that, you know, based off of what the, what the White House Coronavirus Task Force provides us for levels, that does put us, you know, fairly clearly into the red level. Finally, comparing to other, you know, other states and locations, North Dakota, South Dakota are following a similar trajectory compared to Manitoba, Minnesota. Looking at our bottom line, again, I do see some positives in here with our decreasing case counts and decreasing percent positivity. That shows that we're keeping our testing up, which again is, you know, when we talk about the positives and do the after-action report for Grand Forks County, you know, our testing strategy is really, you know, I think something that we need to highlight because we have been able to keep our testing up so well in the community. Our case growth is slowing, and our case doubling time is also increasing, which shows that we are, you know, on a positive trajectory right now. That said, our hospitalization and deaths are not over, so you, we want to see those continue to go down, and we also want to see case rates go down in that 80-plus age group because they are the ones at the highest risk. Finally, you know, a very brief update on vaccine. You know, we are looking, you know, potentially within, you know, a month or so having vaccine in North Dakota and potentially in Grand Forks County. News reports from yesterday did show that, or did mention that, you know, we could potentially be seeing herd immunity in, you know, in throughout the United States by May. So getting greater than 70% of the population vaccinated by May, which we could, you know, call herd immunity. And then finally, you know, the major caveat is that we need to make sure that, you know, Thanksgiving doesn't lead to a, you know, major increase in the number of cases in the community. You know, the highest risk settings that we identify as contact tracers are the small gatherings and indoor settings, so small birthday parties, small, you know, dinner parties, things like that where, you know, it's really easy to let your guard down. You know, we've all been in those situations where, you know, you're with, you're with family, you're with friends, it's a lot easier to, you know, take off your mask, you know, decrease the distance, things like that. You know, that does, you know, that does worry me as a contact tracer that we could see, you know, a lot of increase over Thanksgiving. The state is putting together a plan to help identify if, you know, particular counties are seeing a lot of spread related to Thanksgiving festivities without necessarily having to identify individual, like Thanksgiving dinners or things like that, to see if that is making an impact. And then finally, you know, looking at the Harvard Global Health Institute and their recommendations, really, we should be targeting to get below 25 cases per 100,000 if we do want to, you know, prevent these future case surges. So, you know, if we can, you know, get used to these mitigation measures for a little while to get below that 25 per 100,000, you know, that may decrease the chance that we have to go through this again. And again, that's just looking at the, the data and guidance that they provide. I do have additional slides attached if you do, you know, want to be filled in on any of the other measures that I frequently report, and I would be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doolitz, for that very, very good presentation. Any comments or questions from Mr. Doolitz? In council chambers, anyone on Zoom have any comments or questions from Mr. Doolitz?
Sure, Mr. Doolitz?
Mr. Weber.
Thank you. If you could go back to the slide where you were showing your projections for doubling.
Get that on my hand, and then I'll share.
Yes, that's the one I was thinking about. So, I mean, the, the blue line is still, you know, it's, it's bent a tiny bit there at the end, but it's, it's kind of following the trend, and I noticed that the gray, orange, and yellow lines all have this, this elbow around this, this point on the calendar. Is it safe to assume that that bend in the elbow was Thanksgiving?
Councilmember Weber, that bend in the elbow, when you look at that, that's just essentially time between doublings. And so that's, you know, we're looking at exponential growth, but when I'm, you know, trying to grow the, or draw the line out, it's easier to go from each doubling to each doubling. So, you know, so that point would just be the next doubling that would be projected from that line. So it doesn't necessarily represent Thanksgiving.
Very good. That's a mathematical anomaly, not a calendar issue.
Correct.
Very good. That's all I've got, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Anyone else on Zoom with any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll move on. Item 2.2, Mark.
Actually, I apologize. I did have a further statement, if I may.
Okay, absolutely, Mr. Weber.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy, Council President Sandy. It's the beginning of Thanksgiving week. We, as Mr. Shiel has noted, this is a high-risk situation, and indeed, Mr. Doolitz just pointed out, the highest risk situation we face is small groups gathering indoors. So I'm hoping that as city leaders, we'll do all we can to convince people to limit their gatherings, or if we don't change our behaviors, we're, we're running the threat of entering the deadliest local phase of the pandemic to date. It's been noted that both hospitalization and deaths are lagging factors. As we are nearly on the eve of having a vaccine available, much of the additional illness and death that will otherwise ensue if we don't change behaviors and continue to bend that curve, those would be unnecessary and even preventable deaths. One of the most important findings... One of the most important findings of the UND Grand Forks City-Hugo's mask study, more important possibly than policy, was the power of key influencers in a person's life. For instance, if those influencers wear a mask, the individual is far more likely to do so. Accordingly, I'm hoping that as key influencers in our community, we'll do all we can to caution people against gathering over Thanksgiving. If council or other entities of influence go about their business as usual, especially this week, it sends the message that there's no need to change behaviors. Despite some of the very temporary good news that we received tonight, and I hope beyond all other hopes that, that continues, I think it's, it's foolish to assume that these very temporary shifts suggest that we have now rounded the corner or flattened the curve at the local level. Indeed, as predictable as the spike following the return of UND students, and as predictable as the larger spike that followed after that, we're likely to see the largest spike of all after Thanksgiving if we don't continue to take mitigating measures, including avoiding gatherings indoors. So we must do all that we can to spread the message that social gatherings need to be limited in time and in number this Thanksgiving, so that we don't have to repeat the mistakes or we don't see that rapid doubling or other factors that Mr. Schill and Mr. Doolitz have just warned us about. So I'm hoping that we will send the loudest and clearest message possible to not gather in groups outside of your immediate household this Thanksgiving. If we don't change, if we don't change what we've been doing, by the middle of December, we might expect the darkest COVID days to date. But there's been happy news that the changes in behaviors have had a benefit. So these, these changes in our behaviors do make a difference.